We are gonna be starting now, sorry. The wifi cut in and out, so I needed to make sure I was on the right wifi. Alright, I'm gonna put my guide up here, start poll. I'm gonna be starting, doing the breath work just on my own, takes about thirty six minutes. And then the second session, if it's your first time, I will have more guidance and answering questions. But read the description and then just jump right in. You're gonna feel good, you're gonna feel relaxed, you're gonna have an epiphany, if you like, if you set the intention. No BS. Ask me questions if you got them, I might respond during the first portion, but most likely not until the answering the questions portion after the first thirty six session, thirty six minute session. Alright, we're doing breathwork session. Please breathe. That's correct. Okay, hey, what's going on, Jovi? Start poll, alright. Does DMT help with breath work? I tried Benadryls and they didn't help. I have no idea what that is. Heard of DMT, never done it, I don't know what Benadryls are, sorry. Hey Josh, cheers, cheers, cheers. Alright, so just to clarify, I'm doing a breathwork session. From now on, we're starting these sessions where I do it on my own. Join in, because lots of times we have people that have been here before and you can just join in with my pace and with the audio. And then we also have new people joining. So if this is brand new, come back in thirty six minutes if this is something you wanna do, but you have questions. But if you wanna just jump right in and listen to the audio guidance from Wim Hof and Niraj, stay here and do it, you're gonna have an epiphany within thirty six minutes. I'm gonna click here on my livestream so I can comment. Just, okay, good. Alright, so I said hi to Jovi, said hi to Josh, said, and now I'm saying, hey Viral Clips, good to see you, good to see you, that one, good to see you. Yeah, see you later, Josh, I don't want to, I mean, I don't care if I bore you, so have fun. Thank you Viral Clips, I appreciate that. Ocean Sharks, thanks. I appreciate the love. Please give a thumbs up if you've been here before. Sorry Kunts, you have to go through that. Here's a solution, look at yourself in the mirror for ten minutes and think about what you've done. Or you have a parasite and you shouldn't have been drinking or eating what you had. Alright, awesome. Hanny Cola Dogs, hello to you. I appreciate you too, brother, thank you so much. Ocean Sharks, yeah, I love to dance, I won't be dancing now. Alright, I've replied to everyone, I'm gonna be starting the breathwork, so please read the description. First. I am doing first portion. That's the session without added guidance from me. This is simple. Join in. Just a moment here, copy this. If you have added questions or need more guidance, empty forty. Yeah, it is a long description, Hanny, because this has the ability to listen, when I get it shorter, I'll get it shorter, but for right now, I wanna make sure I cover all the pages. Alright, so I'm just gonna be starting with the three slow Wim Hof, three quick Wim Hof, and then the summer breath. Join in if you want, I might type answers, but I'm most likely just gonna be jumping in here.
Round number one. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. Go with the flow of the breath.
Be right back.
In, out, in, out. In, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Wake. Make it circular. Full in, letting just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more, full in, let it go. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in, and let go. Alright, thirty seconds breath hold from now on. Be in this moment. Let the body do what the body is capable of doing. Be aware of your heartbeat. Slow it down and just be in this moment. Okay, recovery breath in, five, four, three, two, one. Take a deep breath in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Round number two. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. In, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Full in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more, full in, let it go. Nice, deep circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in. And on the exhale, stop. One minute breath hold from now on. Feel, become aware of your body. If your hands and feet are tingling, or you feel your body temperature is changing, that's okay. You're doing fantastic. If you need to breathe before I give the cue, that's okay. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. When you're ready, full in, hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Round number three, back into that rhythm, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. In, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Full in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more, full in, let it go. Nice, deep circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Nice, deep circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Become aware of the blood running through your veins, your heart beating, feel. Thirty seconds left. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Alright, breathe in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Let your breathing return to normal as you finish up the round. Move your body bit by bit, starting with your fingers and your toes. Let your breathing normalize. If you liked this guided reading session, we got more for you. We got a free app on our website. Download it, it's good stuff. Thanks for your time and I wish you a good night, or a good day and a good life. All the love, all the power. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. Go with the flow of the breath. In, out, in, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Full in, let it go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more, full in, let it go. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in, and let go. Alright, one minute breath hold from now on. Be in this moment. Let the body do what the body is capable of doing. Be aware of your heartbeat. Slow it down and just be in this moment. Let that relaxation spread down to your toes, into your fingertips, to the base of your neck and head. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Okay, recovery breath in, five, four, three, two, one. Take a deep breath in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Round number two. Back into that rhythm, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. In, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Full in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. In with peace, out with stress. Ten more, full in, let it go. Nice, deep circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Feel, become aware of your body. If your hands and feet are tingling, or you feel your body temperature is tingling, that's okay. You're doing fantastic. If you need to breathe before I give the cue, that's okay. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. When you're ready, full in, and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Round number three. Back into that rhythm, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. In with the relaxation, out with distress. In, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Full in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. In with peace, out with stress. Ten more, full in, let it go. Nice, deep circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Become aware of the blood running through your veins, your heart beating, feel. Thirty seconds left. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Alright, breathe in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Back into that rhythm, breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. In with the relaxation, out with distress. In, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Full in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. In with peace, out with stress. Ten more, full in, let it go. Nice, deep circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, full in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Become aware of the blood running through your veins, your heart beating, feel. Feel. Thirty seconds left. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Alright. Breathe in and hold for 15 seconds. Exhale in three, two, one. Let it go. Breathe in, breathe out. Breathe in, breathe out. In with the relaxation, out with distress. In, out. In, out. In, out. Into the belly, into the chest and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Fully in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. In with peace, out with stress. Ten more. Fully in, letting go. Nice, deep circular breaths.
I'm near London right now.
Five more. Let's give it all we got. Last one. Fully in. And on the exhale, stop. One and a half minute breath hold from now on. Become aware of the blood running through your veins, your heart beating. Feel. Thirty seconds left. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Alright. Breathe in and hold for 15 seconds. Exhale in three, two, one. Let it go. Let your breathing return to normal as you finish up the round. Move your body bit by bit, starting with your fingers and your toes. Let your breathing normalize. If you like.
Awesome. Alright, I'm jumping into the soma here. This girl is cool, that is. Now get ready to breathe in a rhythm. Three, two, one. Take a turn and then out. Now, take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, make a turn. Take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, make a turn. Take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, make a turn. And let's get ready to breathe in a rhythm. Three, two, one. Exhale again. Uh, excuse me. And now, take a deep breath, fully in. And fully out. And hold your breath. That's right. And when you get that first urge to breathe, count down from ten to one in your mind. As you go past the comfort zone, you'll feel this rushed sensation of energy moving up through your spine. And when you feel this energy moving up, take a deep breath, fully in. And hold your breath, pulling on your pelvic floor muscles, squeezing up pelvic floor, sending this energy up like a spiral of light, up and up and up, illuminating you to the light, your higher power. That's right. And when you can't hold your breath any longer, look to your third eye, your eyes closed, and make a turn. That's right. And let's get ready to breathe in a rhythm. Three, two, one. Exhale again. A quick knee. Now, take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, make a turn. Let's get ready to breathe in a rhythm. Take a deep breath, fully in. Fully out. And hold your breath. That's right. And when you get that first urge to breathe, count down from ten to one in your mind. As you go past the comfort zone, you'll feel this rushed sensation of energy moving up through your spine. And when you feel this energy moving up, take a deep breath, fully in. And hold your breath, pulling on your pelvic floor muscles, squeezing up the pelvic floor, sending this energy up like a spiral of light, up and up and up, illuminating you to the light of your higher power. Take a deep breath, fully in. Hold on a second. My apologies. I gotta catch what I'm trying to catch here. Does that mean you're tipping? I don't know. Or like your cock? It's your cock and I'm removing it. Alright, fuck. I am doing it from this area. Now, take a deep breath, fully in. Fully out. And hold your breath. That's right. Need five minutes. And when you get that first urge to breathe, count down from ten to one in your mind. As you go past the comfort zone, you'll feel this rushed sensation of energy moving up through your spine. And when you feel this energy moving up, take a deep breath, fully in. And hold your breath, pulling on your pelvic floor muscles, squeezing up the pelvic floor, sending this energy up like a spiral of light, up and up and up, illuminating you to the light of your higher power. That's right. And when you can't hold your breath any longer, look to your third eye with your eyes closed and make a tone. That's right. From one with the light. Witness. This glory. As you leave this experience, I shall show you, sir, the new thousands of inspiration, oneness for things, connectedness to that activity that is each and everything. Come from the spirit, the heart, the sense of creation. Take it forth with you as a divine gift and a power to create this world. So choose wisely. This comes very responsibly with a special power of creation. True values, dignity, integrity. Uphold as you move forward on your day, on your journey, on your mission, your purpose and love. Be free. Be changed. Changed. Peace. Namaste. Fuck, motherfuckers. I appreciate you highly. Sorry for the cussing. Fuckers in this sense just means a genuine human. Because guess what? If you appreciate the beauty of creation, which is the number one thing a human does, you fuck. And if you've never fucked, I'm sorry. You don't understand my language. And I don't even mean the sexual act, just real good creation. And the point of these is to have an epiphany. I sure frickin' did. Rick Craft, I appreciate you. Yes. I am gonna be doing this again, um, but in like forty minutes because I have a quick emergency with uh, maybe actually twenty-five minutes. I gotta go drop something off right quick. Uh, so I'm gonna leave my stream streaming 'cause fuck it. Um, also, sorry for cussing. I'm not actually cussing. It's just a sound I make to do that. Anyway, this is what I'm gonna do. Appreciate you, Rick Craft. Alright, let's put some good music on and I'll be back in about twenty-five minutes.
Alright, back. Whew, sorry that took some time. I take care of a couple of things here at home. Just message where you're from. I'm gonna change this. Hey Shiraz, you gonna do our breath work this time? Okay, there we go. Yes, I do, sir Shiraz. I don't know if you were actually doing the breath work, but the point is to do the breath work, so... That's the best benefit. And Sanjukta? Hello, hello? I was probably scaring you because I was typing out a poll in my cellphone. Alright, so we are going to be doing a breath work session. It is six Wim Hof cycles. A Wim Hof cycle goes like this, for those that don't know. Breathing in through the belly, lungs, and mouth. And then relax and breathe out. Breathe in. Relax, breathe out. Right? We do thirty of those, so... Thirty times, right? And then, we hold our breath. And Wim Hof will give the audio guidance. The first breath hold is thirty seconds long. And then we're gonna have a sixty second long breath hold. And then the third cycle is gonna have a ninety second breath hold. If for any of these portions, you cannot hold your breath for the entire time, just do the fifteen second recovery breath and count it out on your own. Each cycle session ends with a recovery breath, but just do it on your own. Well, love Kuchi, thank you for saying that. I don't even think I have that super chat option. I'm pretty sure I need to have a thousand subscribers for that to happen, but thank you. If you subscribe, you'll be able to, you know, get the benefit of this daily breath work in the future as well. Yeah, I am Shiraz. But genuinely, if you could just jump into the breath work as we do it, as opposed to just taking things off topic. Because we're here to do the beneficial breath work that will create relaxing clarity in your mind and just overall good feeling. I am from the U.K., I am from Chicago, and I'm live streaming in from the UK right now. And yourselves? Alright. Let's get to this. Nice, thanks for coming in from India. Okay, so we tried it a little bit new today, but this is the way we're doing it. Basically, if you want to join into this breath work, we're about to start the breath work right now. I'd love if you join in. I'd love if you subscribe if you want to get the full benefit another time. And I'd love if you communicate in the chat regarding the actual breath work. If you have any questions, ask them. But it's just gonna be six Wim Hof cycles and a soma gamma guided breathing. It's... I call it that because Niraj Naif of Soma Breath created the audio that we listen to in a way that the breath is supposed to get us into gamma brain state. Which, as you might know, creates clarity in the mind and body. Hey Flat, thanks for joining. Alright, I'm gonna be guiding us through this breath work. Starts with thirty breaths like this. Nose or mouth, whichever, and then once we get to the second portion, that one is to and through the nose, out from the mouth, so two different types of breathing. Let's get you to an epiphany, ideally. Alright, here we go.
Hi guys, welcome.
Ask questions if you got them.
Hi guys, welcome. This is a guided reading session. Relax to the deepest. Lie down, sit down, whatever it takes, relax. Are you ready? Here we go. Round number one. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. Just go with the flow of the breath. In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Fully in. Letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more. Fully in. Let it go. Five more. Let's give it all we got. Last one. Fully in. And let go. Alright. Thirty seconds breath hold from now on. Be in this moment. Let the body do what the body is capable of doing. Be aware of your heartbeat. Slow it down and just be in this moment. Okay, recovery breath in. Five, four, three, two, one. Take a deep breath in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one. Let it go. Round number two. Breathe in.
Second cycle of six and Wim Hof, you do three, you're gonna feel really nice, you're doing awesome.
In. Out. In. Out. In. Out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Fully in. Letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more. Fully in. Let it go. Nice, deep, circular breaths. Five more. Let's give it all we got. Last one. Fully in. And on the exhale, stop. One minute breath hold from now on. Feel, become aware of your body. If your hands and feet are tingling or you feel your body temperature is changing, that's okay. You're doing fantastic. If you need to breathe before I give the cue, that's okay. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. When you are ready, fully in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one. Let it go. Round number three. Back into that rhythm. Breathe in. Breathe out. Breathe in. Breathe out. In. Out. In. Out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave. Make it circular. Fully in. Letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more, fully in, letting go. Nice, deep, circular. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, fully in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Become aware of the blood running through your veins, your heart beating, feel. Thirty seconds left. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Alright, breathe in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Let your breathing return to normal, and we're jumping right back into it.
Kind of breathing here, let's go. These ones are quicker paced, the breath holds are gonna be sixty seconds, ninety seconds, ninety seconds.
Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. Go with the flow of the breath. In, out, in, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave, make it circular. Fully in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. Ten more, fully in, letting go. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, fully in, and let go. Alright, one minute breath hold from now on. Be in this moment. Let the body do what the body is capable of doing. Be aware of your heartbeat. Slow it down and just be in this moment. Let that relaxation spread down to your toes, into your fingertips, to the base of your neck and head. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Okay, recovery breath in, five, four, three, two, one. Take a deep breath in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Round number two. Back into that rhythm. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe in, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave, make it circular. Fully in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. In with peace, out with stress. Ten more, fully in, letting go. Nice, deep, circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, fully in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Feel, become aware of your body. If your hands and feet are tingling, or you feel your body temperature is changing, that's okay. You're doing fantastic. If you need to breathe before I give the cue, that's okay. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. When you are ready, fully in, and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Round number three. Back into that rhythm. Breathe in, breathe out, breathe in, breathe out. In with the relaxation, out with the stress. In, out, in, out, in, out. Into the belly, into the chest, and let go. Like a wave, make it circular. Fully in, letting go. Just keep on going. No pause between inhalation and exhalation. In with peace, out with stress. Ten more, fully in, letting go. Nice, deep, circular breaths. Five more, let's give it all we got. Last one, fully in, and on the exhale, stop. One and a half minutes breath hold from now on. Become aware of the blood running through your veins, your heart beating, feel. Thirty seconds left. You are almost there. Do you want to prolong your breath hold? Pause the video now and continue when you feel the urge to breathe. Alright, breathe in and hold for fifteen seconds. Exhale in three, two, one, let it go. Let your breathing return to normal as you finish up the round.
Alright.
Move your body bit by bit, starting with your fingers and your toes.
That was six cycles, and now...
If you liked this guided
If you would like to join us for the Soma Breath portion, this will get you into Gamma Brain State based on the breath work pattern that Niraj Naik created in this thirty-minute guided breath work meditation for meeting your higher self. That's the title, highly recommend you do it on your own sometime. But as for today, we go straight to the eight-minute mark where it begins. So, join right in, it's gonna be a deep exhale, and then a full exhale, and then in through the nose for two counts, out through the mouth for two counts. That's gonna continue, and we'll continue that till we do three Aum donations. It'll be a deep breath in and an Aum donation. And that's just with your eyes closed, gazing in this direction, so close your eyes and pretend you're looking this way. And additionally to that... Oh, okay, thank you very much for saying that, Mr. GB. So after the three Aum donations, we go back to the consistent Soma Breath work, which is in through the nose for two counts, out through the mouth for two counts. Oh, thank you, Mrs. GB, sorry about that. And then we continue that for a few cycles, or we continue the breathing, and then after the deep breathing again, we will hold our breath. And then we will have a breath hold portion and an Aum donation portion. Listen to the guidance from Niraj Naik and see what I am doing, breathing in, breathing out. And if you stay with this, then I guarantee you'll have a really good, really good session, you might even have an epiphany. Now, just so you know, this is, if you want to do it on your own, it's Soma Breath thirty-minute guided breath work meditation for meeting your higher self. But just jump right in here, and we're gonna feel really good. Ask questions if you've got them. Now, take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, and make a tone. Take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, and make a tone. Take a deep breath, fully in. Look to your third eye, your eyes closed, and make a tone. And let's get ready to breathe in a rhythm. Three, two, one, exhale. Exhale. Stretch if you need to. The point of stretching is to breathe through your blocks. And now, take a deep breath, fully in. Fully out. And hold your breath. That's right. And when you get that first urge to breathe, count down from ten to one in your mind. As you go past the comfort zone, you'll feel this rushed sensation of energy moving up through your spine. And when you feel this energy moving up, take a deep breath, fully in. And hold your breath, pulling on your pelvic floor muscles, squeezing up the pelvic floor, sending this energy up like a spiral of light, up and up and up, illuminating you to the light of your higher power. That's right. And when you can't hold your breath any longer, look to your third eye, your eyes closed, and make a tone. That's right. And let's get ready to breathe in a rhythm. Three, two, one. Exhale and breathe. Now, take a deep breath, fully in. Take a deep breath, fully in. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Take a deep breath, fully in. Fully out. And hold your breath. That's right. And when you get that first urge to breathe, count down from ten to one in your mind. As you go past the comfort zone, you'll feel this rushed sensation of energy moving up through your spine. And when you feel this energy moving up, take a deep breath, fully in. And hold your breath, pulling on your pelvic floor muscles, squeezing up the pelvic floor, sending this energy up like a spiral of light, up and up and up, illuminating you to the light of your higher power. That's right. And when you can't hold your breath any longer, look to your third eye, your eyes closed, and make a tone. That's right. Become one with the laws. Witness. The story. As you leave this experience, we shall do so. The new vow sets of inspiration, oneness with all things, connectedness to the collectivity of all that is, each and everything. Become one with it, the spirit, the heart, the center of creation. Take it forth with you as a divine gift and a power to create this world. And so choose wisely. This comes great responsibility and special power of creation. Through values, dignity, integrity, uphold them as you move forward. A new day ahead, a journey ahead, a mission, a purpose ahead. Be for me. Be one. Be. Change. Change. Together. Peace. I wish you the best day, even better week, best mountain average for this year, to the people. With this work and study, just hope they enjoy themselves. And peace.